Good morning, my colleagues, and morning to the people of Guam. The Committee of the Whole has returned from recess and is called back to order. We will now begin with the -- we'll be entertaining Bill 40-36, introduced by the Committee on Rules at the request of the Magahagan Guan, the Governor of Guam, in accordance with the organic act of Guam, an act to add Section 1512.5 to Title V Guam Code annotated relative to authorizing the refunding of Governor Guam Business Privilege Tax Bonds, Series 20118, Governor Guam Business Privilege Tax Bonds, Series 2012B, and the Governor Guam Business Privilege Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2015D, and related matters. Before we begin, I ask the Sergeant Arms to please swear in. Ms. Tina Garcia, Representative of the Guado folks.
Under penalty of perjury, do you affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you may proceed. She's under oath.
Thank you, Sergeant Arms. A reminder, my colleagues, the rules of engagement. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel. We'll each senator allot at five minutes for questions, not including responses. Time to speak may not be used from more than one member to another. A member who yields the member's time on question yields all that member's time on that question and may not later speak, even if all the time yield was not used. That's being consistent with the standing rule, Section 1.02D. After the completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused until called upon for the next bill discussion. Amendments to the bill will be discussed after the two rounds of questions. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared Google Drive folder. Committee of the Whole proposed amendment must be submitted in writing to the clerk. Amendments not in writing will not be called out -- will be called out of order. After we complete the amendments on the bill, we will continue on with closing that bill with the motion to accept the bill for third reading by the Committee of the Whole, and then we will continue on to the next bill. I now ask the Vice Speaker if she can please give a general opening of this bill. Thank you.
Sezou Smasi, Mr. Chairman, and Sezou to all of the panel members and my colleagues here this morning. The intent and the context of the bill as referred by the governor was, again, was introduced as the governor to refinance the BBT, the Business Privilege Tax Bonds, at a lower rate savings for the government. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chair, that savings is $22 million in debt service. I know that the fiscal note talks that the potential debt service of savings of nearly $22 million. The earliest date for refunding is October 3, 2021. However, investors are willing to commit to buying a new BBT bond four to five months in advance. And per the CRE report, as of September 30 of 2020, the government collected $17 million less than that of fiscal year's 2020 adopted revenue. So I guess my first question to them is, maybe I can get some clarity based on what was collected and based on the steps moving forward. And I'll open it to anyone in the panel. I'm hoping that with the refinancing of that, that the vision of that debt service savings of $22 million is there, but based on the collections and what has been provided in reports, that maybe they could share with us how we move forward on this effort. Sign him, Smasi, Mr. Chair, and if anyone can answer that.
Thank you, Madam Vice. I'd ask the panel if anyone on the panel would like to ask a question. Mr. Carlson.
Thank you very much. Madam Vice Speaker, thank you for that overview of the intent of Bill 40. To answer your first question, I'll go back to my testimony provided at the public hearing on February 10, where the structure of the refinancing will allow for $5 million savings in fiscal '21 that will help mitigate the collection shortfall that we're currently seeing with the BBT. As we start vaccinating individuals 16 years old and older, as we work towards opening up our economy, not just locally, but internationally, there is a strong sense of optimism, continued optimism, that our BBT will start to increase with the increased business activity. And regardless of whether or not that transpires, this is a very prudent policy measure that will allow for debt service savings in this fiscal year, $19.9 million in fiscal '22, and $13.1 million in fiscal '23. So if we can secure the legislature's authorization, we will do our very best to proceed and try to accomplish the goals set out by the refunding. If I may, we sold the hotel occupancy tax bonds last week. We had an extremely, extremely good reception. We were able to take the interest rates that would have provided the relief in this year and then subsequent years and lower them twice because of the investor demand. So, and I thank the 35th Legislature, then Vice Speaker Terahi, now Speaker Terahi, for the measure that allowed for the refunding of the hot bonds. We're still in the process of final verification of the numbers. And soon as we get that done, we will provide that to the body and to the people of Guam so they can see how well we did with this body's approval and authorization to refund that. Just high-level approximate numbers. The Public Law 35127 allowed for any debt service savings in this fiscal year to be directed to the Guam Visitors Bureau to assist in their tourism recovery efforts. We estimate that that amount will be about $3.5 million in debt service savings that will go to GBB in fiscal '21. More importantly, moving forward, we sent the governor's executive budget request to the legislature January 30. And we took a leap of faith that the debt service, since the authorization was already provided in December and the executive budget request was transmitted in January, that we would achieve some debt service savings. The current debt service of the bonds is about $6.999 million a year, $7 million a year. And so we went ahead and put down a number of $3 million in fiscal '22 debt service. The actual amount that we are going to have to appropriate in fiscal '22 will be just north of $1 million. So we are saving an extremely significant amount of money by engaging in these refinancing of existing obligations with the idea of reducing our debt service. Never once in any of these issues are we extending any maturities. So like with the hot bond, it was -- there was 20 years left. We went ahead and refinanced all of that stuff within the 20-year timeframe. And our true interest cost was 3.23%. We used to borrow money closer to seven. And this is a very, very -- we sold a hotel occupancy tax credit at 3.23%. Investors love Guam. They love the triple tax exempt status associated with Guam paper. They're looking for yield. Yield used to be 6%, 7%. They're happy with 3.23%. And that goes a long way in reflecting the policies that this body authorizes. It goes a long way in the discipline instilled with, you know, a passage of a budget that people are comfortable with and the adherence to the budget. And I think everybody here should be, you know, very satisfied, extremely satisfied that the results of what we were given the authorization to do recently came out as grand as it did. I mean, that's -- I don't use that word, but, you know, it just comes to mind because we truly overperformed in what it was we thought we were going to be able to provide. I'm not saying that we're going to overperform in the BBT, but with the legislature's authorization, with the appetite that our investor base has for a credit that honestly, the BBT is still relatively doing well, unlike the hotel occupancy tax credit, which is, you know, on a recovery mode. You know, it's -- it tanked and -- but people were still willing to subscribe for bonds. So this is a much better credit with much greater coverage. It hasn't had as significant a hit as the hotel occupancy tax bonds did. But we collectively feel that there's some momentum that we can utilize with the hot bond sale. And with the legislature's authorization, as we requested, and I appreciate the legislature convening in March to be able to hopefully provide us the authorization so that we can meet the timeframes and get the sale done in the summer, lock in the savings, translate that, in addition to what we did to the hot bond, to the appropriations chair, for then incorporation into the FY '22 budget, knowing well ahead what cost reductions that we've achieved. So I appreciate all you guys' support. And Team Guam, collectively, we did very, very well.
Thank you, Director Carlson, for that comparison and that presentation. And, you know, I truly appreciate if the realizations could be there and the amounts that could literally impact our government positively. I am inclined to supporting the efforts. I did note that there was a question, I guess, or a comment made on one of the testimonies by one of the outside trusts. And they requested that there be some kind of modification to the language of having the lending occur as a GO obligation as opposed to the straight-out business privilege takeout. And I just, just for the listening audience, I wanted to see if there was any take to that comment. It was noted by one of the trusts, and I just wanted to see if there was any -- updates or--
Yeah, thank you. There was discussion about floating a new general obligation bond to retire these bonds. The context was if we're going to migrate into a sales tax. You don't want to have a BBT obligation with a sales tax. We're not at that sales tax transition point yet. This body can implement an internet sales tax that doesn't affect this credit or the lien on the BBT, which is, again, for the public. The lien here is only on three of the 5%. Three of the 5%, not the entire 5%. So if we had migrated into a sales tax and we were looking to be able to understand the increase that this sales tax overall would generate as opposed to the BBT, then, and we had that established, then I think that that would be a grand idea. But we don't have any of that. We have a refunding opportunity. And the refunding is to take this obligation, knowing that the interest cost is X, reduce it to Y, and therefore have the budgetary relief. I cannot say with any certainty that a new credit with the pandemic as a backdrop could generate the type of savings that we know we are -- that are potentially available to us, you know, barring any market fluctuations. But I would not support that only because we haven't gone down the road to migrate a three-year transition plan into a sales tax.
So noted. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Senator Shelton, do you have any question for the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Bonas, good morning to the panel. Thank you for being here again today. I think the Vice Speaker just asked my question, and Mr. Carlson cleared up a lot of things for me in his opening statement. I was very curious to know if the potential savings was worked into the budget, the budget that was submitted to the legislature. So I appreciate that answer, and I look forward to the rest of the discussion.
Thank you. Senator Perez, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the panel. And thank you for that presentation, Mr. Carlson. It's good news to hear that the success of the hot bond refunding. And so I guess the question perhaps that I have is, is there going to be -- what is the year-to-year savings? Is it consistent throughout the life of the bond? Or is it -- or how does it fluctuate?
Thank you very much, Senator Perez. It is structured upfront, similar to what we did with the hot bond. We see the budgetary relief needed in the next few years. And so we don't have level debt service savings. We have upfront savings.
Would it be possible to get a copy of that? Would it, as far as the year-to-year savings, a listing of that?
I think that was provided, and it might be in the committee report. But I did provide something of that nature when I submitted my testimony in February. It might be in your committee report.
That's my questions for now, so I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Clinton, do you have any questions? None. Senator Pito, do you have any questions? Senator Terahi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to ask how will the Governor of Guam be adding additional debt to refund these bonds? Or is it the interest rate so much better it will be neutral? Or even possibly receive some savings?
Senator Terahi, that's a very, very good question. Thank you so much. As an example, we had $72 million worth of hot bonds outstanding. We redeemed them by issuing $58.9 million of bonds. So the answer to the question is, the whole premise is predicated on having less bonds at a lower yield. So yes, we will not -- we will actually take our indebtedness, our total indebtedness, and decrease it.
Thank you, Mr. Director. I do have another question, Mr. Chair, but maybe I'll just wait till the second round?
No, you still got time.
Or do you want me to ask the question now?
You can ask it now, sir.
Mr. Director, will the term of payments be extended as a result of this refunding? Or if so, how much longer would it take?
Thank you again, Senator Terahi, for the clarity of the question. The maturity, like the hot bond, will not be extended. We will take the existing life, restructure the indebtedness, utilizing the lower interest rates. And that will -- when we do refundings, they're always at match maturity. That way, we're not extending it. They call that scoop and toss. And we're not doing any of that. We're -- this is just a straight utilization of the current interest rate environment that is very favorable to us. So, sir, there will be no extension of maturity.
Thank you, Mr. Director. That gave me the mindset to make my decision on how I'm going to vote for this particular bill. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senator Terahi. Senator Blas, do you have any questions, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Just to the panel, obviously, in this venture that we're going to be, that you're seeking approval and doing. First off, Mr. Carlson, can you repeat again what we can probably realize in savings in the first year, conservatively? Just give me the conservative figure.
Thank you, Senator Blas. My testimony pegged that number at $4 -- about $5 million in this current fiscal year and $19.9 million in fiscal '22.
Okay. With that, and recognizing that in this venture too, there's going to be some cost to it, right?
That's all in, sir.
That's all. So you've factored that into what the savings will be after we pay bond counsel and all the people that we're going to--
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I just -- that's -- I wasn't -- I remember you saying something like that during the public hearing. I just wanted to make sure that that was. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Tello, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to the panel. Hi, Tina. It's always good to see you. Thank you for being here as well. It said in the BBMAR's report that there's actually, according to that, it will be the first quarter is $2 million of savings, I think. No, I'm sorry. It says the beginning is $2.6 million savings for FY 2021, and then $18 million for FY 2022. That's still accurate, based on your BBMAR report?
Are you referring to the fiscal note?
Yes, sir, I am.
Yeah. Again, Senator, just like yesterday with the discussion that transpired on the Bill 23, there's been a, you know, time passage. So I would like to stick with the testimony that I provided on February. I think it's February 10, the date of my testimony. So I think that we're looking now at $5 million in fiscal '21, $19.9 in fiscal '22, and $13.1 in fiscal '23.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lester. Tina has -- how much -- I had a question here earlier that was wondering the cost associated with -- how much is the administrative/closing costs affiliated with refinancing a bond? And has there ever been a situation when you could not refinance a bond at the interest rate allowed by law?
So right now, our bonds normally close at a cost of -- cost COI of about 2% of the bond part. But we almost never go over that amount unless, you know, the amount borrowed is low. So we're looking at 2%. The amount of bonds that we're going to refund is estimated at 325 mil. But we're only going to have to borrow, based on current estimates, 285 mil. So we're looking, after all, the 2% cost of issuance of 5.7 mil.
Which is a total of?
5 million 7, and that'll be, including all the underwriter fees, the bond counsel fees, all the legal beagles, everybody that needs to sign off on this.
It'll cost, yeah, $5 million?
About 5.7 is the estimate, which is 2%.
Right.
So we hope to come in lower than that. Again, going back to, you know, we -- in the history, we've never--
You've never had a situation where you weren't able to refinance a bond?
There was only one time, and this was when the market was falling. And this was 2007, 2008, when we had the housing crisis happen. And we were not hitting the interest rates that we had presented to the legislature at that time. So we did not sell the bonds. We came home, waited for the market to calm down, reset, and went out and we got the rates we wanted in the end.
Okay, after a while. But you still had to pay that upfront cost, the closing cost?
No, we just paid it one time, the expense.
I see. And it's good to know about the hot bond that it was able to be refinanced. So there's a lot of, you know, comfort into knowing that. But, you know, as we move forward with what we anticipate, hopefully, you know, with some funding that's coming from the federal government. So my next question, Lester, do you happen to know if -- will the governor be able to use any funds from the American Rescue Act to pay for any of these bond obligations? The $660 million coming in?
We are still working on the mechanics. Mr. Burns Association, my National Association, the National Association of State Budget Officers, we're still trying to get clarity from Treasury on the guidelines for the use of the money. The -- those guidelines are very critical, and they have not been established just yet.
Have you been given a timeline from the federal side as to when you're going to get that information?
It's dependent on the Treasury, Senator Tadicwe. So we anxiously check our emails several times a day, waiting for guidance to come out. But we don't have any further guidance. And more importantly, we don't have the money.
Okay.
It hasn't been transferred yet.
Right. Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity, and thank you to the panel.
Thank you, Senator Tadicwe. Senator Adda, do you have any questions to the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lester, I was reading on your testimony that it's a 60-day process. Should we vote on this bill by Friday? When do you look at going into the market?
Early summer, Tina? Well, when are we looking at pricing? June? June, July? I mean, if you get the -- we give us the authorization this month, right? So we have all of April and May, and we can go in June. It just takes a little while to put all the documents together. We can't do really anything until the authorization is there. We can put together time estimates, but we're comfortable with getting the authorization now and still being able to effectively access the market in the early part of the summer. Again, it's all predicated on being able to close this and provide the results for incorporation into the budget. So that's our -- they're like parallel goals. You know, the debt service savings first, and then the construct of the 2022 budget.
And then we're looking at still realizing the savings, even though we -- with this 60-day process, right? We're still looking at realizing those savings?
Yes, sir. Barring any examples that Ms. Garcia mentioned, back in 2008, we did go out to the market, and the prices for a little bit of money were double-digit. So we did the right thing. We came back. And then the legislature subsequently authorized the issuance of the 2009 general obligation bond. And as Ms. Garcia mentioned, we were then able to float that bond at rates that were so much better, so much better. So there -- we believe that the market will be there for us. Our triple tax exempt status really does, you know, attract a lot of people. And we think that we're on track.
Okay. Thank you, Lester. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's the only question I have this round.
Thank you. Senator Brown, do you have any questions to the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the panel. I think most of my questions were answered during the public hearing, but I just wanted to follow up on Senator Adda's question with regards to the timeframe. When do you look at completing the process and being able to look at the initial proceeds back from the bonds? If we're on schedule, as you mentioned, with approval in March from the legislature and your 60-day time scale and going out on the market?
Yes.
Yes. I'm asking you, Lester, what's your timeframe before you can complete the process and be able to get the initial proceeds back?
Oh, once we price, like what we did with the hot bonds last weekend, we get the final numbers, you know, then we can provide that to the legislature so that you'll see the fruits of the labor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think overall, I think, as we mentioned during the public hearing, I mean, I'm very pleased to have gone through the process as well just to see how interested the investors are in Guam. And it's nice to see over time that that relationship and extreme knowledge that they have of Guam. I mean, I'm surprised to the degree that they keep track of our daily news activities here on the island. You know, in terms of looking and knowing who and what they're investing in. So far, it's been profitable for them as well as for us and the benefits we're able to receive. So, I mean, this particular bond process is probably going to be one of your easier legislative hearings. I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense during this time. And then once we--
I think, I think it makes a lot of sense during this time, and then once we have the proceeds back, then we can address where the priorities would be to, to reinvest that money back into our community. So thank you very much for the information, and thank you for your continued.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Assistance with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Moyle, did you have any questions? None. Senator Duane, do you have any questions, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and as the retiring speaker was mentioning, it certainly is a very attractive proposal. I think, following up on a couple of questions, Tina, the, the cost of 5 million plus, is that, is that part of the financing? Just like when you take a home loan or something, so it's built into, it's not cash out of pocket, it's built into the borrowing?
That's correct. And that's taken into account, the savings, and that already takes into account the, the savings and interest rates that Mr. Kraus has spoken about.
So Lester, that's why the gross savings estimate is 39, 861 or so? It's listed as gross savings? Okay. I, I only have one question in, that I'm curious about, and maybe this is with you, Lester, and maybe Tina, too. I, I'm just a little bit, I read with interest David John's testimony, and, and I guess it's, it's important because David John's still the, a board member with GITA, right? So has this been active discussions in terms of future borrowing? Because, I mean, he actually makes a recommendation to, to pull this back, and, and I'm just trying to understand, is, is the policy, the thought process from GITA going forward, the possibility of switching, or going back to general obligation bonds as opposed to the BPT?
Thank you for that question, Senator Duane. As far as a policy issue, when the governor sent this bill down at her request, I think the policy issue has been settled. I, I, I don't have a problem with the legislature looking at a long-term transition out of BPT into sales tax, implementing an internet sales tax now, which doesn't have any effect on anything but just captures revenue. And I have a lot of respect for David John. He is the chairman of the board. We, we had a lot of discussion about this, and, you know, I just, my, my takeaway was, you know, I, I agree, but the savings that we can get now with refunding an existing obligation and not transitioning is like having one in the hand versus two in the bush.
Sure.
So I, I would encourage the sales tax bill that my primo here introduced, and more importantly, an internet sales tax bill, because that would just level the playing field, and I, I, those, those, those things are available in a longer-term plan to transition out of BPT into a sales tax. I'm certainly supportive of it, but I, I can't do it to the disregard of the savings.
Sure, and I, I just think it's, I have to ask it because it's part of the committee report, and so that when we debate on this or potential amendments or anything, or, I mean, it looks tight right now. But I think, Mr. Chairman, the reason why I bring it up is, you know, we are the policymaking body, and going forward, you kind of have to know what, what would be the direction of our key, you know, financing institution that gives us advice on, on, on how to finance and what to do and what the direction would be going forward. So my takeaway then, I just want to be clear one more time, Lester, my takeaway is that general obligation is something that's definitely viable, but you're saying down the road after other legislation is, is considered, and other, another tax structure possibly in the, in the coming months or this year sometime. So take what you got right now, and then whatever David John's mentioning here, the mechanics of that are, probably be predicated on, on the fact that we change our tax situation.
Yes, sir. And just for everybody's recollection, we used to issue out general obligation bonds.
Right.
We created this credit specifically before credit ratings went, you know, out the window for stupid reasons that has no bearing on our performance as a government. But we created this BPT, and it was actually rated like A-, versus our GO bonds, which were not, were non-investment grade. So we, we consciously created a new credit to be able to take care, advantage of lower rates. Now, until we can assess that it, it makes more sense to do the opposite of what we did, starting in 2011, I, you know, again, if we get the sales tax and we see that the revenues generated are, like, you know, off the charts, I think we can make that conscious decision.
I, I remember that, Mr. Chairman, and that's why I'm, I'm asking these questions, because we were part of that body that, 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 and the reason why this was so attractive to take care of our deficit and everything else, and the money we owed to our taxpayers, and, and, and the whole nine, basically, that, you know, as difficult as that was, it's because we came up with a, a great financing mechanism to be very attractive and become investment-grade and save the people of Guam a lot of money. So when I saw that, you know, testimony, I was like, GO, you know, it kind of, it kind of made me shiver a little bit because we, we would go back to that. But now I understand it more based on the, the fact that the, the, the timing to do that would be based on further legislation coming down the road, and that wouldn't be a, a way of going backwards, because the tax structure would have changed, and then it might become attractive. So I think it's good for the listening audience to know, too, in case some of them that are following along are, are finance-type of folks, and that's why I asked the question. So I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied with this proposal, Lester and Mr. Chair. I think this is the right thing to do. So please do this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senator Duane. Senator Torres, do you have any question for the panel?
Yes, I do. This bill is relative to authorizing refunding of three series of GovGuam BPT tax bonds, Series 2011A, 2012B, and 2015D. And you had mentioned, Lester, that there is a projected savings in this fiscal year and then, and in the next fiscal year, but I was wondering what, and that the maturity date doesn't change, but what, what generally is the maturity dates for these three series? Or do they, do they vary, or are they generally the same?
Tina, you can help me out on this, but I think that 2015 has a 2025 maturity, so we're, we're restructuring that because there's a lot more principal that's coming up, and, but therein lies the, the savings for this fiscal year by restructuring that one. But everything else is on a, on a match maturity. The 15 is the only outlier because of the fact that, you know, it, it actually has a, a big payment that's due, and if we didn't smooth that out and put the savings up front, we'd only be getting the savings in 2022 and 2023.
Further to that, again, we can only refund or refund certain issues within each bond series, and we would only do that when we show that there is a positive return, where the, the yield will, will be better with the refunding. We have a total of about 700 million in, in BPT bonds, and we're only refunding 325 of it. So, you know, we can't, we're only doing that, again, we just pulled out the ones that would, would provide a savings to the government. And what we're doing is borrowing money, putting it in an escrow to pay off those bond invest, bond investors, and because rates are so low, we're able to get better rates today.
Okay, I get it. Thank you. The, and I just want to say congratulations on your selling of the hot bonds yesterday. And that, the proceeds of, the, the savings proceeds are, for that are restricted to GBB, correct?
Just for this fiscal year.
Just for this fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas with any savings here from this Bill 40 and the refunding here, that will be applicable to a variety of things, as you testified in the public hearing, right? We can then take that savings and appropriate that savings to various needs within the government of Guam operations, right?
That's correct, Senator Torres. Once we provide the legislature with the final numbers for the savings in this fiscal year, it is incumbent upon the legislature to then, you know, reallocate those funds as they see fit to do so. So there, there, there really is that nugget there in this fiscal year, which I think is very advantageous.
Okay, and I'm, I'm glad that the governor sent this down at the time that she did, ahead of the budget cycle, so, you know, that we can take full advantage of the, the revenue projections and be able to make appropriations, you know, at, at the front end. So we appreciate that as well. And I don't have any further questions unless you have any comments.
No, no comments, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of the body's response to this piece of legislation. I, this really is the prototypical refund for savings model, and it does, as I mentioned before, but it's worth saying again. Hopefully, this recovery period is consistent with the upfront savings that is being achieved, and, and so we're, we're taking the savings where we need the money while we recover from the pandemic. So I, I think it's just a, a great budgetary tool. Thank you, Senator Torres.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions for the panel?
Yes. Thank you, and thanks to the panel, and, and congratulations again on, on sale of the hot bonds, and getting better than what we expected is really very good news. So I'm glad that we were able to facilitate that, and it seems very prompt that it was done. So thank you again for your efforts. Wanted to follow up, if in the sale of the hot bonds, were we, any, was any of that able to be sold locally? None? Is it possible to have that done? I know we put in a provision that I tried to mirror a provision that was done in other bonds, and I know that it has been accomplished, and so, I don't know, could you speak to that, Tina?
Yes, it is in the GITA statute that we do offer buyers on Guam a priority sell, a priority purchase of any bonds that the government brings out. And a week before the bond issuance, or the bond pricing or sell, we do put it out in the, in a public newspaper. The bonds are to be sold, these are the dates, these are the amounts, and, and then we work with local brokers. And we just found that, I guess, a lot of it is, you know, the investors on Guam are not ready to invest in the government bonds at this time. And a lot of the interest in the mainland is because of our triple tax exemption, and our bondholders already get that. So, you know, again, the returns are nominal for them.
Right. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to ensure again that if we could, we extend that locally?
Yes.
I'd like to see that. Okay, so the other one is, so I think, Tina, that you said that the, the cost that you estimated to be about 5.7 million, that is after, or that the savings and the cost, they've taken each other into account. So this 5 million is after the cost. The 5 million in savings is after the 5.7 million in cost. Is that correct? Okay. And then part of that goes to interest, attorneys, of course, underwriters, other costs, however, a part of it, and you have a formula that you told us during the public hearing, I think it was going to be about 0.2%, or 600,000 going to GITA for fees. And then I saw in GITA's budget that they use these for their, you know, operations, right?
Yes. Operations and, and other outstanding receivables, we help, we try to cover it to maintain our financial stability.
All right. So the cost for the hot bond, did it, did it equal what you had projected when we talked about that hot bond in here? Or were, was it more or less?
So it was a little bit less because the par was lowered because of the interest, interest rate lowering. So it was just, we were estimating about 60 million, I think we ended up at 58. So it was just a little bit lower, but around that area.
There's, yeah, so several bonds that we are restructuring this year, bringing additional fees into GITA. All right. The, Lester, could you just clarify? So we had an estimate that this would bring in savings, 2021 of 5 million, 2022 of 19.9 million, 2023 13.1 million. But after that, what happens?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In 2024, there's an $86,000 savings. In 2025, 94,000. In 2026, a million dollars in savings. And then after that, it's just over 100,000 a year with a, with a low of 7,888 in 2030. So the savings continues throughout the rest of the maturity, but they're just structured to be the bulk of it upfront.
Upfront. All right. So I appreciate that. I wanted to make sure there's no, we're not going up at any time.
No.
It's going to. Okay, that's great. And then I, I thought it's timely that we're discussing this bill today after we received the CRER yesterday for February. So the CRER for February showed, you know, for the general fund, a continuing shortfall. So this now is 22.6 compared to 25.1 in January. And so that's calculated, I think, on your CRER to be a 2, 22.6 million is a 2.92% shortfall. So still, it's not the end of the quarter, but it's still a little shorter, that 3%, where the fiscal realignment's automatically required. But I was wondering, in light of these shortfalls, if, if there is any cost savings planned by BB Mar, or, you know, by the government of Guam, you know, are we going to, are you planning to adjust the proposed expenditures for FY 21 in any way?
The governor is still looking at how to incorporate the American Rescue Plan funds. One of the eligible areas of use is for backfilling lost revenue. So to the extent that she believes that she needs to provide some funding, that's, that's something that she's considering. Again, she hasn't had a real opportunity to finalize her plan absent the guidelines. We, we could advise her to do something today, which might be in contravention to the guidelines, and that happened with the CARES Act. Mr. Burns and I had numerous phone calls about how the rules got changed in the middle of the game. And on these calls that we're both a part of with the state governments, everybody's echoing that, you know, it was very much appreciated aid, but some of the, the rules of engagement, you know, could have been better defined and less, you know, less of a headache. So there, Madam Speaker, I, I, I think if, all things being equal, if there's a, a need to inject some money into the current year budget for continued public safety, public health, public education requirements, she is looking at that. But as far as cost containment, we're always looking at ways to contain costs, always. So I think that is something that she's going to be looking very focused on, but I can't really tell, tell you one way or the other right now.
All right. Well, of course, I'm concerned because the, you know, while we, we may receive federal money, the 661 million, and that might be used to offset these reductions in revenue, you know, if, it could also be used to, you know, for things that we did not foresee, that, that came up because of the pandemic, for example, you know, shortage of healthcare, MIP, things like this, that were not even appropriated because we did not foresee that type of need. And so I just wanted, yeah, to ensure that we are still, while we are achieving savings by restructuring these bonds, that we're still continuing always to look for cost containment, that I think it's incumbent on us. Because every dime that we can save in any kind of frivolous expenditure can be used to, you know, continue to put food on the table for, for people that we did not budget for, you know, those are things we did not budget. They're not even contained in this budget. So I'm just saying we can reduce what we did put in the budget in order to take care of some of those unexpected, you know, needs. That's what, that's what I'm hoping we're doing.
No, I think you and the governor are, are very much on the same page. This is, the first money was to first money was to fight the pandemic, this is now to recover from the pandemic. And the four broad categories include public assistance, assistance to businesses, you know, four primary categories for the bulk of the money that is going to be coming to Guam. So again, one of them is infrastructure for water and sewer. However, the timeframe to spend the money could be problematic because you have to design and permit and build and spend. And for a project like that, unless we get like an extension for a infrastructure project, we'll never get it done. And the state of California also echoed that same concern, especially with their very regimented permitting requirement. So they're looking for a little bit of latitude as it pertains specifically to addressing an infrastructure project. Because if they don't budge on that, then you're probably not going to be spending that money where you want it to, simply because the time constraints were onerous.
Right. Yes. So we are looking forward to the receipt of all the additional money besides the 661 million that, yeah, for specific uses such as infrastructure. I am very much hoping, you know, we're going to be able to address these families who complain of this outrageous cost of the hookups, that they are just not able to bring water to their properties, right? And a good example is this Chamor Land Trust lease recipients, completely unable to utilize those lands while we are unable to bring water even to the vicinity. Yeah. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to that. Mr. Chair, my time, I'll wait for the next round. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Amanda, do you have any questions? None. Senator Perez, do you have any? My colleagues, be reminded, we're in our second round. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yes, a question. So I was looking at the breakdown of the payments. And at the heading, it says estimated. So what would change that amount?
Market conditions, but be reminded, it could be up or down. So the estimate that you're seeing right now is basically what we feel is appropriate to provide, similar to what we did with the hot bonds, we estimated the savings as well. And thankfully, we overperformed in that regard. So it's a function. If there was a shift in our favor, those savings could go up. It's not always down.
Thank you. And the interest rates upon the sale is fixed, right? Is that correct?
When we sell, yes. We don't get it to variable rate bonds at all.
Okay. I think I had another question. Yeah, just maybe a historical question for GITA. So what was the source, what was the reason for purchasing these bonds in the first place? What was, what were refinancing?
The first business privilege tax floated in 2011 was to catch up on some past due tax refunds, as well as to begin the, or to make payments towards the COLA settlement. That was in 2011. 2012, we had some COLAs interest rate, interest that we were, we had to pay and weren't included in the initial estimate. So we covered that. And then there was a little bit of, and then the 2015 BPT was done to refund outstanding general obligation bonds. We had a 2007 and a portion of 2009. And so that's what we floated those bonds for. It was a refunding of existing bonds.
So I guess it's perhaps conceivable that, you know, because we're trying to keep up with our income tax refunds, that we can eliminate this debt potentially at some point? I mean, we amassed, like you said, $700 million in debt, and we're refunding about 300 million. And it was a large part due to the income tax refunds. So, I mean, I guess, maybe it's more of a statement that it's, you know, we can, you know, hopefully wipe out the debt since we're keeping up with income tax, as long as we keep up with those payments?
Yeah, the 2011 bonds caught us up with 198 million in past due income tax refunds. And we had about 20 million in COLA settlement funds that we had to pay. So that caught us up. And since then, I believe we've been keeping up with our income tax payments.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Clint, do you have any questions for the panel? None. Senator Pito, do you have? No more. Senator Blas, none. Senator Tello, none. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one other question. Tina, Ms. Diego Garcia, I'm sorry. How much would GITA realize from the, from the bond refinancing?
So if we're going to issue, I believe we said about 300 million, I mean, where is that? So we have about 285 that we're planning to issue. So GITA would get about 400, 23, 24, about 500.
About 500,000?
500,000, yes.
And what happens to this money?
I'm sorry?
Where does this money go to, into an account?
So besides paying for our expenses, we have about, we have, we do different explorations for the administration, different research, I think. Back in the day, we were looking into GMH bond and all of this. But it's all part of our operational obligations within our statute. And so we use some of that to pay down our previous operational expenses.
So you just did the refinancing on the hot bonds, right, recently? And what did you realize out of that?
So from the hot, from the hot, GITA realized 147,000.
Has any of these funds ever been transferred out of GITA to, has the governor ever transferred out?
No.
From this account? No?
No.
Okay, thank you, Senator. I'm glad to hear that you guys will be at least getting 500,000 on this refinance. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Brown, do you have any questions? Follow up? None. I know Senator Moynihan has advised me he has no questions. Senator Wenzel, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to do this because my friend Steve Guerilla looks lonely there, and he hasn't been asked a question. Now, in all fairness, I think it's important to put it on the record from office and finance and budget, do you concur with the representation from the administration on all of this presentation on this financing?
Thank you, Senator. You know, Senator, times like these where funding resources are very, very scarce, and it's going to take at least a couple of years to get us back to some sort of normalcy through the pre-pandemic, in my own personal opinion. I will support the administration's effort in anything they can do to reduce the cost of government, to generate additional funds, and to secure these funds in a reasonable way where it doesn't obligate the government for any future long-term debt. I think the proposal that both Mr. Carlson and GITA, their presentation this morning, I would support totally 100%. And we are in the process of preparing the FY '22 budget. And as soon as, as Mr. Carlson said, whatever savings are realized, you know, they would also, I would hope they would provide that savings and that information to us so we can incorporate it and work with them in preparing the FY '22 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I thought it was really, oh, go ahead, Tina. Yeah, I thought it was really important, you know, to get, because exactly, that's coming up soon. We're gonna, we're gonna be here for a whole different reason. And that is talking about the fiscal year budget coming up, budget call. So I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page and make it as part of the record. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Wenzel. Tina, did you have one follow up?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to do one follow up to Senator Ada. GITA, you know, the funds that we earn, yes, we earn from the bond fees, but that also goes towards our initiatives. As you know, GITA is Economic Development Authority. A lot of our operational costs are tied, again, to initiatives that we're trying to develop as far as trying to rebuild our economy, creating new initiatives. We are trying to seek as many grants as we can. And we're getting some positive momentum there. But, you know, with such limited funds and such a wide range of requirements from GITA, where we have tourism recovery, GITA's heading the government's efforts and, or supporting the governor's efforts in the economic recovery business side. And so a lot of what we do, we try, we work internally, but that's kind of where we rely on our leases and our bond fees to help support our different activities. So I just wanted to, I don't think I was very clear on that. My apologies.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. And perhaps maybe in the future, you know, since GITA is the economic development driver for our island, maybe a higher percentage for GITA's pull aside there.
Thank you, Tina. Thank you, Senator. Senator Torres, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that in the committee report, what was provided to us by the Citigroup, the estimated BPT refunding results actually demonstrates what I was asking of you, Ms. Garcia, about the schedule of the bonds and the maturity dates. And it does note that all of the callable 2011 A and 2012 B outstanding bonds are refunded through this, and that, as you indicated, portions of the 2015 with certain maturity dates are there. But it also gives a very good glimpse of what the impact in savings is for fiscal year 2021, 2022, and 2023. And I just want to comment again that the timing of this is wonderful because when you consider the economic conditions and the economic rebuilding that our island has to undertake in the next few years, particularly with the recovery or restart of the tourism industry, the savings in fiscal year 2021 of 4.9 million, savings in 2022 of 19.9 million, and savings in 2023 of 13.1 million is exactly the shot in the arm that the government of Guam economy does need. So I again, offer my support for this measure and wish you Godspeed in refunding the bonds per bill contemplated in Bill 40. So I just wanted to note that. But I thought that the provision of this table is exactly what was needed to understand, you know, how and why. And that while the impact is, the savings impact is tabled through 2041, it does show the top heavy impact in the next three fiscal years, beginning with this one, and why this measure is so important right now in this economic climate. So I just want to thank you for providing that also in the committee report because it then cements the necessity of this legislation and how this legislation is indeed very sound. And it was good that the governor sent it down to us at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Nelson, do you have any questions? None. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Yes. First of all, does this proposed upfront savings structure maximize the overall debt service savings? Or is there any other way to structure it that would have made a larger savings? Or is this it?
I believe that this was the most advantageous for both the upfront and the overall savings because restructuring bonds that would ordinarily be weighted heavy in the latter years, therefore that's where the yield is. And so if we were to do a level debt service, you're probably going to see the interest rate climb because you're not going to have the bulk of the savings at the front part because you're going to be getting that benefit upfront versus over time. Therefore, the cost of borrowing is increased. So I believe that this, it meets both of the litmus tests as far as frugality, and also to the exact thing that Senator Torres just talked about with the timing and the upfront savings and the shot in the arm.
Now, I realize the benefits of the up far, but Tina, do you concur that this, that the savings are equal, this upfront, that we've structured it versus any other way that you might have structured it, the overall savings?
This is where we were able to push as much savings as we could to the front and still have savings every year after. So yes, this is the math in our initial, in this structure. And again, like Mr. Carlson said, we could do level savings, we could do, you know, structure it any way, but this provided the most savings.
The most savings overall?
The most savings for this structure, yes.
This structure provides the most savings overall?
I think we looked at others where it could be, you know, more savings level. But again, we're trying to provide economic relief initially, and that's where we propose the savings.
Madam Speaker, if I could help on that. If you can reduce your interest cost upfront, that means that your overall cost, it's like having a mortgage, but normally it's the other way around. You have to pay interest first before you pay principal. What we're doing is front-loading the interest. So over the life of the bond, interest rates are reduced.
Yes. So in general, so are you saying yes to my question then?
Yes.
Okay. Wanted to confirm that on the original purpose of these bonds, because that's what's going to be. My next question was, so, you know, these were floated for income tax refunds that were unpaid at that point for many years, of course, COLA. And, but when I looked at the most recent report of the income tax refunds, it looks like for 2019, we still have processed yet unpaid 10.92 million refunds pending. And for 2020, we already have 4 million processed yet unpaid. So that's like 14.92, about 15 million. And that, that's more than the 5 million savings, unfortunately, that we will see this fiscal year. So, but I am hoping that, so between the 5 million and the 19.9 million in the next fiscal year, that, yeah, we can prioritize these towards that, you know, and take care of those. But I was going to ask you, Mr. Byrne, unless you have another plan to pay the 15 million refunds?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. This report was dated as of March 2. We, I think it was the refunds through, returns filed through February the 19th. So of that 10.2, I think we paid like eight, something like 8 million. Some people are still filing, and the reason for it is, you know, is not clear to me, but some people are still filing 2019 tax returns. And that therefore will tend to increase again that number from the 2 million that was left.
Okay.
As far as 2020 tax returns, they've just started
Yes.
to come in, and we are hoping to address those as quickly as we can.
Okay, great. So I'm glad that your payment reduced at 10 to about 2. Fantastic. I hope that's right.
Yes.
Okay. My other question was, going back to, you know, when we talked about, so it's not 600,000 that GITA is going to be receiving from these bonds. You're saying, Tina, now it's 500,000? Because we had talked earlier about 600 that you had said at the public hearing, but now you're saying 500,000? If, and you said you received 140,000 from the hot, the hot bond refinancing? If, and you said you received 140,000 from the hot, the hot bond refinancing, right? This is just GIDA's fees? And then, what did you receive for the JFK refinancing?
For JFK, we floated a $65 million bond. GIDA fee on that was about 160,000, 160,840.
And from the GIA, the airport bonds?
The 2019 GIA bond was a $37 million bond, and the GIDA fee was 104,000.
104?
104.
It's my understanding that GIDA has, when they, so, you know, in their budget at the beginning of the year, you know, of course, they could not anticipate or include this type of refinancing that was not yet approved. So, this, I think I calculated on 600,000, if it was 600,000 GIDA received from this refining, refinancing, that's in addition to a $2.8 million budget. It boosts their budget by about 21%. Yeah, I'm just bringing this up because although you said that these, you know, you use the board discretion, of course, to use it for operations, hiring, or whatever they decide, or they could use it for the development programs. Yeah, I am, I am just concerned we don't have a proposal here how they would be used. And, yeah, I, you know, I've seen other bonds where they've taken these fees and put it towards, you know, other needs in the government. And so, I just, I just wanted to know what the amounts were.
If I could just make one comment. One of the things we did during this pandemic is we ran, and I think we mentioned it, we ran three grant programs and with the existing staff. And so, a lot of this is additional activities that we're doing on top of. And so, again, it's just, you know, providing that support to continue to grow. I think, you know...
Did GIDA hire extra employees in order to run those grants?
No, no.
Yeah, so that's what I mean.
We did incur a lot of expenses. You know, we did incur some expenses. And, you know, we did, we don't pay overtime. They held back on our increments. And, you know, every year, it's a struggle because we have had shortfalls in our industrial rental customers having, you know, struggling again on paying their lease, leases due. So, again, I think if you'll see every year, you know, every year, we're just barely making it operationally.
Right, that's what I mean. But that's even without expecting this amount, right?
Right.
And this, yeah, when you add all these refinancing, it's about, you know, 800 to 900,000 addition
Right.
additional to GIDA's budget. You're saying you're not hiring employees, but you're running programs that's being funded out of CARES money. Those were the programs that the governor handed to GIDA.
But our expenses are not covered by CARES. And I think, you know, and again, not to argue, there's a lot of initiatives on the table. The governor's working with the chamber, GIDA's working on those, and again, providing that support. We're working on the GMH. So, again, it's really spreading out.
So, are you saying GIDA didn't hire any employees for the past year?
In the past year, actually, we just picked up one new person, but it was a matter of internal promotions and people retiring.
Okay, yeah. Well, if you add them together, it's about 800 to 900,000 dollars from the refinancing fees. It's about 30% increase in the overall budget, I think. Just wanted to put that on the record, Mr. Chair. But otherwise, yes, I support the refinancing. I support the savings upfront. I support, you know, the overall savings over many years. It's a good deal for the government. I think we have to be very frugal still while we are obtaining savings, that we still have to be, we have to show efforts to contain costs, that we can't just rely on, you know, let's just replenish the government's 22 million, this month's loss on, you know, revenue. But let's, you know, let's respond also with cost containment. Let's also respond with frugality and the expenditure of the fees that we might be receiving from this money and, you know, just make sure that we're continuing continuing to prioritize every step of the way, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you to the panel for the questions and answers.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Folks, Madam Vice Speaker, do you have any questions? And if none, then if you can go ahead and close on this bill?
No, thank you very much.
End this discussion on this bill.
She's host, Mausie, Mr. Chair. And thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to close on behalf of the Committee on Rules. I just want to share as I support the efforts, wish the administration luck on making sure that the realizations on savings could truly help the government in its basic mission mandate. So, with that being said, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that Bill number...
Mr. Chair, are we going to not have the third round for amendments? Point of order, yeah.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Oh, yes, she's closing on the bill and moving to rise, and I wanted to ask if we're still going to have them, round for amendments?
We're, Madam Speaker, there are no amendments. That's why I'm asking her to go ahead.
Oh, I have amendments, so...
No, there's, Madam Speaker, rules of engagement is the amendment has to be loaded up. There is no amendments loaded on the system.
Well, it's being sent now because we're still on round two, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm...
Okay. Let's take a quick recess, all right? Thank you, a recess.
...
Um, colleagues, if you look through your drive, you'll find, uh,
No, that was the first one sent. So, okay. Okay, then, Mr. Chair, I'd like to do that second, but I'm gonna, I'll do the other one. It's for line three to page six. Three to seven, page six. It's about to amend one five one two point five F.
They both read the same thing, ma'am? So, which, which, why don't you go ahead and read it out?
Sure.
Because I'm looking at the time. One was eleven thirty-three, one's eleven thirty-six. The next one's going to say eleven forty.
Okay, I don't know. But the other, the one that's not uploaded is the one that was sent first, I think. But anyway, so let's do this one first, please, colleagues. It's on subsection F. It's, um, well, I guess they both are. But this one is to, um, it's, is to change appropriation by Imaga Haga Guahan to, subject to appropriation by Illes Hateran Guahan. So, in other words, the savings that we are going, that the government of Guam is going to achieve by this refinancing is, I'm proposing that that will be subject to appropriation by the legislature after paying off the costs, of course, and the interest. Uh, but that it should not be, as the bill currently reads, available for appropriation by Imaga Haga Guahan. I think this is a proper way to protect these monies and to ensure that we, we do direct how they are spent. Mr. Chair.
Madam Speaker, your, your, that amendment is, is, if you look at the drive, it's eleven point, eleven thirty-three when it was loaded. And that'll be, um, exactly as the Speaker has read out the, scratching the word available, available for, and subject to, scratching out the Imaga Haga Guan and adding Illes Hateran Guan. Correct? Madam Speaker? Is that correct, what I just read? Does any of my colleague would like to speak to that amendment? I'm looking for hands. Senator Tello.
Mr. Chair, I just want some clarification that the amendment that I'm looking at, I have two amendments on, on this drive right now. And the first one is very short, only, is that the first one? It's on line three to seven, page six, which is also the, the same, so it's kind of hard to lie on the other.
Yes, I think that's the one. It says, uh, subject to appropriation by the Illes Hateran Guahan.
Uh, for any other lawful purposes and period, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it is a shorter version. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Are there any colleagues that would like to speak to that amendment? Senator Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise in support of the amendment as Mr. Carlson was saying earlier today in the Committee of the Hall, um, the legislature shall appropriate these measures as they see fit. So, I believe it goes in line. And he also made a statement that, um, when the Speaker asked a question, that her and the governor are pretty much on the same page when it comes to the, um, of how the six hundred sixty-one million dollars will be sit, uh, fit to be expended. Thank you.
Any other colleague would like to speak? Okay. I don't see any hands. Are there any objection to this amendment? There are no hands? There are no objection? Amendment passes. Madam Speaker, you have another amendment.
Yes, thank you. Um, so the next amendment I want to do is on page nine. It's a new section. Okay, so it's to add a new section that will allow for local sale of the bonds. All right? I don't know if I need to read the whole thing, but it's, this is, uh, this is standard language in some of the other bond bills that we have passed, and it allows for local sales. And we heard from Gida how they notify locals, you know, people of Guam of the opportunity to purchase these bonds, as they said, it's very popular for their investors in the States, and I want that opportunity to also be shared with the people of Guam, if they are able to.
My colleagues, do you see this? It's in the drive. You just have to refresh, maybe? It's basically what, what Gida brought up. They offered, they open it up to Guam, local, and if they, they chose not to, then they continue on to the open market. But this amendment, just make sure we add it on. Senator Perez, you like to comment to this, um, this amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise in support of this amendment. I think it's a great amendment. It, it ensures that, um, the, that we're reducing capital flight. You know, if we're going to invest in our own, um, government, you know, it's best that we keep the interest within our community so it can have this multiplier effect, potential multiplier effect. So, I rise in support.
All right. Um, does any other colleague would like to speak to this amendment? Are there any, there being none, are there any objection to this amendment? I see no hands. Amendment passes. Madam Speaker, your last amendment, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This last amendment is to add one particular reservation of, uh, part of the savings, and it, it allocates five million of the revenues, shall be appropriated to the Department of Public Health and Social Services in FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two for the sole purpose of providing temporary assistance in the form of grants, which shall be distributed to local nonprofit organizations that provide food and commodities for homeless individuals, unemployed individuals, children, and low-income families. These funds shall not lapse and shall be available to public health until fully expended. Because we have, my first priority was tax refunds, but because we've heard that they are making progress on the tax refund payments, I, you know, my other concern, Mr. Chair, is that despite all the aid that we have received and distributed in the community, you know, even Gida grants, even, uh, direct, you know, assistance to families, when, when there is food available for distribution, the lines continue to be long. Families continue to evidence a need for this, and I'm, you know, so I just think there is a gap. And now, while this new money, this new cares that we are going to be, uh, or the new, sorry, um, you know, package that Congress has passed does allocate amounts specifically for, you know, homelessness, children, of course, and the tax credits for children are supposed to help, I am just proposing that in, in the interim, that if we can allocate these savings directly for food, that's, that's my proposal, Mr. Chair. That's only because I, I don't know why we continue to have these gaps, but you see these nonprofits out there when they distribute food, the lines continue to be very, very long, the people are still in need. That's, that's the only reason. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Does any of my colleagues would like to speak to this amendment? I see no, Senator Perez?
Um, yeah, I want to commend the, the forward thinking of the author of this amendment. You know, before budget, we already have appropriations. So, uh, yeah, I, I rise in support. I think that, you know, having oversight of DRT, you know, I know firsthand that there are people that did not file, did not, was not avail of them, they did not avail themselves of the EIP payments. And so, I think this is a really important stopgap measure to help support those really in need. So, thank you.
Thank you. Senator Tello, you wanted to speak to this amendment?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. I thank the author of this amendment. I too, you know, believe that, uh, these areas of the homeless and, you know, low-income families are desperately in need. But my concern, Mr. Chair, here is that here we are appropriating funding that would most, probably now that we've made this amendment, will go directly to the general fund on any cost savings that is anticipated, which they say in 2021. Now, we all know and anticipate that six hundred and sixty-one million that's coming from the Fed. Some of that funding, uh, it, like, uh, Mr. Carlson mentioned, they still don't know how we can spend it. One of my questions earlier were brought up about the bond, you know, the obligations to the bond. Can we use some of this money? He, he didn't know. And I, I think if we'd asked him that same question with it, when it comes to low-income families and children and unemployment, I think it would probably be an area that would most likely be covered, considering. So, with this funding that's coming in, I think that, um, that can be used in this area. But there's some areas in the government of Guam that we would not be able to use that six hundred and sixty-one million. And this five million dollars can go to some of those areas. And, and since we, since the previous amendment that was proffered earlier and passed by this body with no objections whatsoever, allowing the legislature to make that determination was a very good thing, and, and I support it. However, I think it's premature at this time to, to take this money right now and already appropriated something, well, first, we don't even have it yet. And, and that's a question that I have for legal. Can we appropriate money that we don't, we don't have at this time? Or I guess that's, or obligate the money that hasn't been realized at this point? I guess we do that all the time when we do, when we do the budget, right? We, we project. But I'm, I'm kind of concerned on this, though I really, I appreciate the effort that's being made, especially to Department of Public Health and Social Services, um, for families and the homeless, most especially. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chair, um, they're trying to close now on a facility for the homeless and, and buy an apartment complex to house those in, in need. So, it's kind of, it's tugging at the heart here, you know? But, um, I, I guess, um, I'd like to hear what my other colleagues have to say on this, but I, I'm leaning toward, you know, not supporting this amendment, only because I feel that, uh, this money can be placed in areas that we don't have the authority to use that six hundred and sixty-one million that's coming in from the federal government. You know, that might be an issue. So, um, I'll, I'll continue to listen to my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Senator Tello. Does anyone would like to speak to that? Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I, I understand the, the need here that the Speaker is, is relating here with regards to providing funding for something so critical and so necessary. But I, but I have to concur with Senator Tello with regards to this. I mean, there's nothing to prevent the legislature by passage of the previous amendment between now and the time the bond refinancing happens and the proceeds are put in place for the legislature to go back and address the appropriation of those funds. While everyone talks about the six hundred sixty-one million dollars that's falling from the sky and how wonderful it is, and the governor's saying, "It's my money, not your money. I get to decide what to do with it." There's still going to be components of the budget. We're not going to have control over that funding, as we will with these bond proceeds. And I think I would like to look at the budget, certainly as a member of the legislature, and see where those critical needs can be addressed with money that is within our authority to appropriate so that those, those areas that don't get support and funding can be funded. And federal resources, certainly, I would assume that the, the governor would look at these as priorities to ensure that our families, that are most in need are getting the assistance from federal money. If not, we still have time in the next few months because this, this, nothing's going to transact with this money until it, it exists, uh, that would allow us to come back. And if there's not, then I, I have no problem supporting, uh, the appropriation. I'm just apprehensive. We haven't even gotten the money, and we're already tripping over ourselves in where it's going to be sent, even though I don't think anyone here will argue that this is not a priority. But there are components of our, our government. Yesterday, we just had the conservation officers here. We have other critical needs in the government where there, there is, there has not been funding to assist them, where a few hundred, where a few thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, my goodness, for some of these operations can make tremendous difference in the amount of support and help, including with regards to law enforcement, to make our community feel safer. Because certainly after we eat, the next thing we're going to want to do is feel safe, which a lot of our people today don't feel safe. And so, I think if we had a little more time to do that, because this money isn't going to go anywhere between now and the time, uh, you know, Gida moves forward with getting these bond proceeds in place, uh, we have the opportunity to do that with the upcoming budget. Because there are critical areas of this government that are underfunded or not funded, that I think have more direct engagement with our people that we also need. And we have no guarantee after next year, after this six hundred and sixty-one million dollars is absorbed and sent wherever it is, of them. You know, it's 2021, 2022, 2023. Where are we going to be then? So, I'd like to be able to have the opportunity to review that as a member of the body, and certainly, I have no problem. If there is no recourse and, and money is not dedicated to this purpose between now and the time the bond proceeds are, are received, I'd be more than happy to support the Speaker's intent here of wanting to forward the money to public health. But I, I just think we need to be a little cautious. I think we need to be fiscally responsible and still meet these needs. We have the time to do it, uh, and just not rush right now and, and take these monies that we control, um, and, and determine this is where it's going to go without, without taking the opportunity to see if other federal resources can do that, and we can expand that operation within our government with, with the limited funds that we actually have and that we're generating at this time. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to comment on this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Vice Speaker, you, you wanted to speak to the amendment?
Yes. Sidus Massey, um, Mr. Chair, on that note, just, uh, listening to the retiring speaker, um, I, my only concern, because I, I literally support the intent of the measure, is what if, for reason, some reason or another, we get federal dollars for food and shelter, and if the federal dollars come in, you know, can we use, uh, this for many areas of, of our government that desperately need them? And, and as the retiring speaker spoke, so maybe in, um, maybe what we can do, uh, Mr. Chair, is maybe we can look at asking, uh, asking legal maybe to reflect that in an amendment that, that would say if, if resources were to come in through federal dollars or what have you, that maybe there could be other uses for those funds. So, as I support the, the Speaker's intent of this amendment, you know, I'm, I'm just, with that rescue plan coming in, you know, we, we don't know where all of it's going to, and I'm just hoping that maybe with this, that compromise would be, ask legal to look at an amendment that will reflect, you know, both. Just food for thought.
Thank you, Madam Vice. Why don't we just take a quick, real quick recess, and I'll consult with the legal. Thank you.